Good evening and welcome. This time I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting November 7, 2016, to order. And our invitation and pledge will be led by Commissioner McIntyre. Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's break. To the Father, we thank you so much for many blessings you have bestowed upon us. And even though we had a lot of tragedy and sadness in eastern part of the state, thank you for making sure it wasn't any worse than it is. We pray for those folks down there. They visited through there on their way to the beach and they were most devastated. Be with those folks. Let them know that you're there for them, as we know you are. Be with this board now tonight, to honor the Father, that we might make decisions that may please it to you, to the benefit of our citizens. It's things we ask in Christ's name. Amen. Please stand and join in pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate that. At this time, are there any approvals or adjustments to the agenda?
A motion to accept is presented.
I have a motion to accept, and I would second it by Commissioner Brozal. Any discussion?
Hold on, hold on. I think it's an resolution. Do we want to go over it?
Mr. Chairman, I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion.
And I would make a motion to amend the agenda to add an item for the Greater Bayonne Water and Sewer District in the consent agenda and make it... and make it... put it in the consent, gentlemen.
In the Greater Bayonne consent?
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the Greater Bayonne agenda item.
Not the consent.
All right, I have the motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those who oppose, you carry it. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we have a super street intersection proposal from North Carolina 2427 New Brook, and our presenter is Mr. Scott Coleman, Mr. Payballer. It's Payballer. Talk to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. We have become aware of a crash problem at 2427 New Brook, and we propose a super street type intersection to help address that problem. What we do is if we identify a problem, we will run a crash history on it, do an analysis of what could help prevent those crashes, and build a cost estimate, preliminary cost estimate, and then we apply for safety funds. And that's kind of where we are right now. We're ready to apply for safety funds, and we need support from the county commission just in the form of a resolution to help our Raleigh office know that the county is aware of the proposal and has no issues with it. We're not asking for any funding from the county to make this change. So you should have in your packet tonight about 10 slides, and those 10 slides show, first of all, show 2427 New Brook. The intersection is right there at the Aggricivic Center. It is currently a full movement intersection with 2427 being four-lane divided, and it is stop control on New Brook, and 2427 there is just 55 miles an hour. If you turn to the next slide, you will see the crash data that we're showing for a five-year period at that intersection. And we see six angle-type crashes, basically people pulling out of New Brook and getting hit from traffic coming from your left. Okay? I've traveled to intersections on a daily basis. I live in Northern New Brook County, just out on there, and I see people coming out of New Brook, and they'll stage in the median to finish their turn. Well, that seems to work fine, goes through the wide enough median to protect a typical vehicle. But then a second person will come also out of New Brook and not have anywhere to go, and sit there in the travel lane and wait for someone else to make, finish their movement. And that's just a dangerous situation that we're trying to address. So we see one fatal crash, one A-type injury, which is a permanently debilitating crash, a B injury, and three property damage only crashes. So not really a large, large number of crashes, but because they are the T-type crashes, and it's top miles an hour there, that some of them are severe. Severe injury crashes. So you see the next page there. We are showing a concept of recommended treatment, basically a directional crossover lefts into New Brook. So whether you're coming from either direction, left or right, you can turn into New Brook directly. But coming out, you can only take a right out, so you'd have to take a right, go down 600 to 800 feet, and then do a U-turn there. And that basically divides those movements up and allows them to be made more safely. You don't have to negotiate multiple directions at one time to try to make a movement. You look left, turn right, go down to the U-turn intersection, and you're able to see traffic coming towards you, that oncoming traffic, and able to safely negotiate that U-turn. So the next page shows what is a super street? Is the type of intersection which movements from the main intersection are redirected to the U-turn points built short distance from that main intersection? And we say they're redirected for safety and efficiency, because it actually works more efficiently than your standard intersection. And this would not be the first one of these in Stanley County. We have one at 2427 Indy Road and that Indy Elementary there. There's a lot of traffic that comes out of there, including school buses, and by knowledge, we haven't had a significant crash since we put this directional crossover U-turn system in at this location. We also have the same type of intersection there at 2427 Camden Road, where you can turn left into both West Main Street and Camden, but if you want to go east on 2427, you do have to go down to that U-turn point and do a U-turn there to continue to go east. So those two slides show those two existing super street locations. And then we're on to the safety benefit slide. We reduce the likelihood of crashes at these intersections, have reduced conflict points from a standard intersection at 32 conflict point points down to a super street design, you actually reduce it down to 14 conflict points. You reduce a lot of those crashing... excuse me, those T-type crashes, the severe crashes, because you're not crossing multiple directions with your movements. And we have a significant crash reduction factor. We experienced about 50% reduction in total crashes and 92% reduction in angle crashes, which, as you can see from our previous crash diagram, the angle crashes were predominant here. So the next slide, slide number nine there, of safety funding, the project will compete statewide for limited funding. Primary factor for funding approval is the benefit cost ratio, which we've calculated for this location is 21.92, which means that for every dollar we spend in cost, we expect to reap about $22 in benefit. So that's pretty substantial. Each project competes independently from others, and support and funding approval of this project will not lessen chances of other projects in Stanley County being funded with safety dollars. Specifically, we're looking closely at US 52 between 2427 and Oldwood. We've had some crashes there, and Kate's going to talk a little bit more about that if you have another minute after we finish the discussion on this intersection. And that's all we had as far as slides are concerned, and would ask that the county support this with a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Any questions? Scott.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've got a few questions. What do you anticipate the project, total cost of it?
I do not have those figures.
Do you know what the...
I do have it. We submitted it for $675,000.
$675,000.
Okay.
And you mentioned for $1 investment in this project, you would reap $22 worth of benefit?
That's correct.
How did you arrive at that figure, and what do you consider a dollar in benefit? What does that tell?
Okay, so the benefit is derived from the crashes and the severity of crashes that have occurred at that intersection over the last five years. Okay? And we actually assign a dollar value to the cost of a crash. So a more property damage only crash has a much lower cost than a more severe crash as concerned. So when we have a high number of severe crashes, like we have had at this intersection, and basically that generates a high potential preventative. So that's what we have here.
So in addition to property, do you consider the cost of medical care and death?
Yeah. She is more intimately involved with that process than what is included in it, so I'll ask her to come up.
Yes, the dollar amount associated with a fatal crash or an A-injury crash, just like previously, I've heard it's damage only, they all have dollar amounts associated with them, which entails the property damage to signing or garb rail, anything DHT-related, any kind of insurance relation, and any kind of medical cost associated with the injuries that occur. And it's just, they give you a relative term as how to relate project to project based on the benefit. This actually had a fatal crash and I believe an A-injury crash. And A is, like Scott said, a debilitating, critical knee type crash, survivable with critical knee. So that's a severe injury, and when you add up all the medical costs incurred and stuff like that over the duration of treatment and stuff, that's what goes into determining the values of the crashes itself.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
How did you come about recognizing this intersection and deciding to study it, or how did you get to this point?
The recent fatality. We had a fatality out there on graduation day. It was an elderly gentleman, and I'm not sure if he had a medical condition or what, but that led to it, but it ended up resulting in a fatal crash. He pulled out from New Brook and was hit from the west side as a right angle type collision that ended up in New Brook.
So that was one of the victims going on?
Graduation day.
Right.
It was during graduation. I'm not sure what school... I think it, I want to say it was like 11 o'clock, so I'm not sure he was in attendance. He may have just been using the road on that day. It was just, I can remember just because I know what day it was, but based on it was graduation.
Do you have traffic count numbers on New Brook of that intersection?
I can get that, or ATTs I can definitely get, but it's very low in relevant days in 2427.
So I guess I'm talking about that intersection. What comes through that intersection typically?
I can get that. I don't have that with me, but I can see the difference.
I would like, I would be curious to see what that amount is compared to an intersection such as Canton Road, or Odell Road, or Boss Road intersection, or Indy Road, Carica Road, everything that's up and down that area there.
Right. Well, it'd be similar. Canton Road actually, my understanding from some people that I know live in that part of the county, the western part of the county, have diverted their own driving behavior from Canton Road to New Brook, thinking they can pull out quicker out of New Brook and make a left instead of making the current design that we're wanting to install at Camden. So basically, the volumes are very similar, and they may even re-disperse once this project was rebuilt and equal back out. But I can get you the volumes or the air traffic.
I can tell you, I would bet that is very true, what they've told you, because I've traveled through there on a daily basis, every day, several times a day. And I no longer go to the end of Canton Road to pull out, cross a lane of traffic, to immediately slam on brakes, to turn a left in a big vehicle, to have to cross two lanes, go over on the side of the road, stop, let traffic come by, and then pull back out. So I'm not in favor of adding another super street intersection in that area, because I feel like what's going to happen is folks are just going to move down to Odell Road. And that same issue is going to arise then. When you cut this one off, they're going to move down to Odell Road, and you're going to cram more traffic into another intersection right there.
Well, the reason we would be proposing on there are extremely safe designs from what's out there now, like Scott mentioned, the four-lane divided highway. And Canton is now divided and has the U-turn movement that you're talking about, but at New Brook, you have to basically make sure it's clear in both directions. You can possibly hesitate in the median or stack in the median, even though that's not what that's designed for. A lot of people do that. But to not have to negotiate both directions of traffic at the same time before it's clear, only having to look at one direction opposing traffic and then make a U-turn, is a much safer design, and many research data proves how much safer it is. And the reason those designs are safer is because instead of a T-bone crash, a 90-degree angle crash, which tend to be more severe because it's a direct hit from a right turn out or a U-turn looking at the other opposing direction, they tend to result in sideswipe type crashes if there's a crash at all. And sideswipes are much easier to walk away from than a T-bone crash. And that's why it makes it, it reduces the severity and the number of crashes, and they've worked tremendously well all across the state. And the reason we're supporting it on this quarter is because they're already out there, and we'd like to make it consistently progressive down that same corridor, and as needed, remove any at grade four minimum cost overs.
Any others?
Well, I've come out there to Indy every day, and the super street, that's called the... I like it. You make a right turn all the time. And I had my first experience with it, when I was on RPO then, in Indian Canyon, when that guy presented his study. I didn't like it either, but then when he presented it, it made sense. It's a lot safer intersection and move more traffic. So if we move it down, start having trouble with the next road, put one down there, better start getting wrecked. That's what that ought to be at every intersection on that road out there. Need one to stop light at Running Creek, too.
Well, most newly proposed projects through the DHT, that is the cross section. We know, we try as much as possible to put those types of maneuvers in.
That's a relatively new road. Why was that not installed originally, if that was the design?
Well, I don't have that much history with it prior to it being constructed, but I will say that this design kind of came to the forefront during the process. So we had gone through the planning process, and we knew with our process, unfortunately, it does take several years to get from initial project funding through the entire planning process, the National Environmental Protection Act process, the NEPA process as we call it, get through final design, relocate utilities, and be ready to construct. Unfortunately, the design kind of came to our attention, came to the forefront late in the process when we weren't able to make those changes wholesale for the entire project. We did make the changes at Main, Canton, and very soon after we built the project there at Duty.
Indy.
Indy, sorry, Indy. And so we were able to make those changes there, but weren't able to implement wholesale on the whole project.
I do have one question regarding the U-turn lanes. How many cars will stack in that particular lane? Do you have any idea?
We typically do an analysis, and we have modeling software that we can use to determine how many are required and to peek out, and that's what we design it for. So we design it for the worst, and then it works the rest of the time.
I guess that would be my own concern, because when you have some event, there's a lot of people there. Everybody leaves at the same time. My concern is hopefully it'd be long enough not to stack up.
Well, unfortunately, at that location, being that it doesn't go in both directions, we can bring it all the way back to the current intersection as it is named. So if we build a U-turn in, I can probably...
So we'll model and make sure that we have enough stores there, not just for the opening day, but of course for in the future as well. You know, we had been successful with this system or this design at other locations. One of the locations I was personally concerned about was 218 and US 74, because a lot of 218, you know, the wreath of beach people coming down 218 to 74. The mayor down there was real concerned with that, and we put it in, and we had multiple fatalities at that intersection, unfortunately, but we put this in, and there's not been a problem with traffic queuing up or with safety measures since.
Now, you said that there was, in addition to the fatality, there was one that was a high critical one that happened down there, too? So you had a couple major ones?
And what he's referring to is that he used to, when we do an analysis for a location, we pull five years of history, the most recent five years that we've had. So within that five years, there was, I don't know the date on it, but an A injury to us warrants the same measure as a fatality. We treat it that, as that critical.
Well, this is one of those things, and I'll use this analogy, maybe future Commissioners Swain and Morgan will think about this when they get up here. I watched the movie Jaws, I watch that like every couple of years, and the one scene that always gets me as an elected official is when, you know, they had the shark attack, and they open up the beach, and the little kid gets eaten up by the shark. And then the mother comes up to the funeral and slaps Chief Frody and says, "You knew, you knew, but you did nothing about it." This is one of those things that safety is an issue, and a lot of those things, when you know about something that's a potential thing, I would not want to vote against this and have a future accident right there and have that guilt on my shoulders that I could have done something about it when the professionals brought us evidence that something needed to be done. So applaud you all for working on safety. Everyone knows that goes straight across, shots are pretty dangerous compared to right-hand turns and just left-hand turns.
Right. And when we analyze an intersection, we look for patterned crashes. And you know, if we did one fatality here and it was just a one-off, then we may not be proposing this today. But if you look at slide three, there's definitely a pattern of crashes there.
Any more questions?
Just another comment is, if you understood the traffic in that area, understood where the people are coming from in the morning and then the evenings, and their methods of travel, I can tell you that they're gonna change their routine from that intersection and move it straight up to Odell Road. They do not like that right turn where they've got to immediately cross a left lane, and you were talking about stacking that into that turning lane. If you bring it all the way back to that intersection, you're going immediately across and then having to get ready to stop when it stacks up in the turning lane. So I understand there have been accidents there, but you know, there have been many accidents in other areas I would think that would be a major concern as well that we're not addressing. So just my thoughts.
Cole, I need to make a motion that we support this project. How would I make a motion that we support this project?
I have a motion. Second. You're making a motion to approach a resolution. Second. Here for him. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose. No. Motion carries six, one.
Okay, if you have just a brief moment, I think it's another update, right? Real quick about other projects we have going on that we don't need resolutions for, it's just informative measure. We are planning to install and have submitted for the necessary funding and traffic signal at the intersection of AC 2427, Browns Hill Church Road, that and Locust. In addition to that, we already have the resolution from the city, that's why we didn't make one of this from this body, but there's also going to be some directional leftovers at the Plaza that's just west of it to help reduce crashes there because of the severity of some crashes that we've had at that driveway also. But that's all part of one project and has been submitted, and it was submitted for $530,000. Also, 2427 out here in front of Walmart, Nixon, which is the signalized intersection at Arby's, down to Spalding Road, which is just beyond O'Reilly's. We're putting in concrete median through that area with some directional crossovers in there. Leaving the signals alone, I mean, just adjusting to adjust for the traffic patterns. And also now we will be including in that project the city's Road of Linnor coming out of Walmart and adding an additional lane there to make it dual left-south, just to increase that. That's scheduled for 2017. It'll probably be late 2017, but it's already submitted and funded, so it's on its way. It's already designed, it's just going to be completed. In Stanley County, on Millinport Road between Five Point Road and Old Mill Road, and also on Five Point Road between Roland and Ridgecrest, we're doing some super elevations through there. And garb rails, that was brought to our attention by the fire departments and stuff due to round road type crashes and rollover type crashes where they're finding cars or things like that, or they see repeat crashes, so we're addressing some concerns out there. That should be done this season, I believe. And also, as Scott mentioned, the 52 corridor, we had several fatalities in Stanley County. I investigate all the fatalities, but Stanley County usually is not one of concern, but this year alone, we've had quite a few on 52 in both the southern area and the northern area. But between Doorwood and Alamo, we had an outside group come in and do a road safety review for us, and for them to take a whole new look at it, we see it every day. I drive that road every day myself, and once you see it every day, you don't necessarily notice things. So we brought some independent eyes in there, and they made their recommendations to us. So we'll be submitting for a project on 52 for the next turning, which will be in three months. So just wanted to give you that, and let you know that there is a project that's coming for 52. We didn't finalize everything that we're doing out there, but they did make several recommendations, so we plan to take most of those until...
I agree with the chairman of this signal or the light in Locust is much needed.
Did you say it was funded?
It's funded, it's coming.
Okay.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Brownfield, no, we just submitted it today.
Okay. So that's why it was just now submitted, so I thought funding was pretty quick.
No, it was...
Probably you don't help us quite that fast.
Yeah, I don't think so. That one was submitted today, we had a turn in today.
Okay.
And this one, New, that we're talking about tonight, can go in the package with today's, if that makes sense, the resolution had.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Thank you all. Item number two is United Level Public hearing to consider maybe curbed tail lane. Brandy had to hit me out on that one, so.
I'll probably just pronounce it here, so. The private drive to be named is located off Gold Branch Road, approximately 2,350 feet southeast of the D Street intersection in Ridgeville. It was brought to our attention, a resident from that road came in and requested that his section of the road be named because that particular easement went all the way around and connected to Gold Branch Road on both sides. At some point, a fence was put up, and so both sides are no longer, cannot go all the way around. So the resident requested that the easement be named so that emergency personnel could get to where they needed to go a lot quicker, because apparently there had been some confusion out there. In your packets, the letters for, that were sent to the residents or the property owners on this section of the easement are in there. On September 16th, I sent the first notice to the five property owners stating that we would like to name the easement and request the names. In between September 16th and October 12th, I... In between September 16th and October 12th, I received three letters back with names on there, several different names, and Curl Tail, there were two different variations of that, and so Curl Tail Lane was approved to name the easement. So now I'm just asking that you hold a public hearing and receive approval from the residents.
Any questions for Brandy? All right, I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for or against the naming of Curl Tail Lane? Yes, ma'am.
It was actually my husband and I who asked for the road to be changed. However, neither of us are very fond of that name, so we would like for the road to be changed, but not for that name.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak for or against? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure to the board?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question, I guess.
Yes, sir.
We wanted to select a different name, how would that process work?
I believe that we would have to pull together the road naming board that we have and come up with a different name.
Questions?
Questions, Chairman? The young lady that spoke, did you all submit a proposed name?
We did.
And what was that name?
Our first choice was Old John Deere, but we were told when we went in to start the process, my husband actually went in, I have a newborn, he's eight weeks old, so the process was started when I was newly out of the hospital. So I did not go into the office when he started the process, but they had said that they go through, they communicate through the other names in the county. We wanted it named after our last name, which is Len, L-E-A-N, but there was also another road in Stanley County that was L-Y-N-N that sounded too similar. So for communication problems, which is what we're trying to avoid, we couldn't go with that. So that's when they started to send the letter out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would there be any reason why we couldn't just table this until the next meeting? I kind of think Curl Tail Road is kind of a tongue twister and a little bit of a...
Yes. That's why I didn't like it. The other two, you probably got, you said you got three letters and the other two letters probably had that on there and it's because there's a creek in that area and that's the name of the creek that runs through there. And so that's why I think that a couple elderly people who live in the area wanted the name of that. And I personally am not fond of the name. One, I think it's hard to say and the creek isn't actually on our property, it's just here.
Which one did you prefer?
We like Old John Deere, but I'm okay with, I don't know, there's like Jacob Road or Jacob, that's actually my son's name, so.
I'm just curious, well, on the one, you guys are the legs, right?
Yes.
But it says here on the one that's here, that has Old John Deere Road, Farm Pond Drive, I'm sorry, Middle Drive, Curl Tail Creek Drive, and Backwoods Drive.
Okay, so I guess that was one of the choices.
But it says that Curl Tail Road's on that, on that form.
Okay, I apologize.
And he submitted, I mean, he submitted that form that says Curl Tail.
Okay, I didn't realize he had put that down on one of his. I know that a couple of the other residents, they all kind of got together and were trying to come to an agreement on which one, so. It was in order though, I think, so that was our fourth choice.
I think he wrote, is this his handwriting or does he write this one? Well, I think I had more votes than I had two votes, I would add.
Ms. Webster, you said a committee selects two names that were submitted, is that correct?
Well, it's me and the director of the 911 department who go through and make sure these names are approved. And then we choose, you know, on this one, the one that was submitted the most, and Curl Tail was that one because it was on two papers and...
I guess I, it's kind of weird here because it looks like it was a two to one, a vote for two, and one of them was your husband, so maybe it was just some confusion there. So it's not like his other neighbors that put this over the top, so.
It really doesn't affect anyone other than us, but because the road, we're the actual only home that is on the road and the other properties are just land, so they don't use the address.
Oh, okay, yes, I know, well, one, you should add it.
Yes.
So is this one just, can I have it up with another name, is that okay? I don't, I mean, that's...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move, I move that we table this until the next meeting and I plan to submit additional names for recommendation.
Second. All right, I have a motion to table with a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
All right, number three, Plan Zone, our presenter is Mr. LaFosse-Sanday.
Thank you, Chairman Ford, Commissioner, kind of answer, glad to be here tonight. First case we have is CE 16-38, this is a million, area request, finding the property request to hold it to be adopted, declared dilapidated and partially burned dwelling owned by Manuel Hernandez and located at 12-862 Austin Road in Locust. Declare unfit human habitation and authorize the direct of the Stanley County Housing Inspector to proceed with the demolition and removal of the minimum housing code violation of the property, also tax record 4334.
Any questions for Mr. Sanday?
I would add, Mr. Square, intended housing inspector would give full detail as part of the public hearing. I just meant, you have the public hearing.
All right, at this time I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for or against?
Mr. Chairman? This has been a long process on this particular one, I don't think we've had another case that we had so much trouble finding the responsible parties, but anyway, we have notified the owner of this hearing. We also have held a hearing in my office and gave, found the findings of fact to be so and issued order for the owner to demolish and remove the house. That timeframe has come and gone. It appears the owners have not and are not in the process of doing anything, and so we ask that to be given the authority to go ahead and carry out the order on the housing statement.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else here to speak for or against? All right, at this time I'll declare the public hearing closed. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I know that this will be removed in the expense, we will have a lien on the property, will the lien against the property cover the cost of the removal?
Yes, and the administrative fees, which were the postage, certified mail to all parties, that type of thing, and the filing fees because your ordinance per general statute would have to be filed with the clerk of courts office and with the registered dean's office. So, yes, it would be, it would cover any cost to the county. And also the minimum housing code cases, the liens are like a special assessment lien under Article 10 of the general statutes, 158. So it would be collected by the tax office as a special assessment lien.
Mr. Square, do you know if there's a mortgage against this property?
I have talked to the bank that held the mortgage several times. They, after the fire, they submitted a claim to the insurance company, the insurance company had paid them all that it would, and any additional cost was, has already been written off. The house burned in 2011, so all of the interest that the bank has, pretty much has been met according to the trustee of the loan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would make the motion to authorize the Stanley County Housing Authority to proceed with the demolition and removal of the minimum housing code violations from the property.
Thank you, ma'am, I have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Suda? Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Would we not need to make that motion, the housing inspector, or leave their file up?
Stanley County Housing Inspector? All right, we will change that to Inspector. Second, any more discussion? I know it's been a nice work for a long time, I've worked with it too and the neighbors there certainly appreciate it. All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
I have a question, before y'all leave, I have a question.
What does the Department of Labor report, when you get down to man with questions?
All right, and the next is a rezoning request for ZA 1606.
Mr. Chairman, 29th ZA 1606, Paula Harmon, on behalf of El Springs Development Company requests rezoning from RA Residential Agriculture to R20 Residential Single Family. Company requests rezoning three tracts, total in 3.4 acres, tax record 565, 37680, and 18626. The properties are located at the intersection of Highway 73 and Happy Farm Road. Lots contain five homes and are currently divided, currently too small to meet the minimum lot size required in RA District. The owners plan to divide the largest tract, the 2.4 one acre tract, that contains three homes in three separate parcels. Presently, the large lot is not conform to the requirements of the RA zoning district by having three homes on the lot and two small homes, and the two smalls conform to the minimum lot size. The homes on the lots existed prior to the adoption of the Stanley County zoning laws. It changed to R20, this would eliminate all lot performances once the large lot is subdivided. The homes currently serve as rental properties. New ride properties are in Stanley County zoning jurisdiction, which is spread to RA, with one lot highway business for immediate storage. Approximately 10 years ago, water soon was extended throughout the area to serve the Millenport School where, here in, along Highway 73. Property is not located in a regulated flood plain or water supply, traffic on the section of NCDOT has been studied at estimated 5,300 cars per day. Department recommends this request, so the range of lots of compliance will subdivided. The planning board unanimously recommended this request and this is open again. We'd like to answer any questions.
Any question, Mr. Sanday? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for or against the rezoning request for ZA 1606? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure to the board?
I have a motion to approve, Commissioner LaFon, and a second by Commissioner Dennis.
Any more discussion?
I have a question. On all of these, this one and the next two are similar. Are they planning to add to each one of these, add a building or another house or...
No, I'm not sure what El Springs company plans to do with the division. I think they plan to sell the half, one house out of the three that are on one parcel and they came across that the lot's too small to divide all of them into separate parcels. So their option was to rezonate.
This is probably a stupid question, but I've always heard the argument, but why would you go to trouble to go through all this to rezonate them now? Why not, like if it's big grandfathered in and if somebody wanted to change it, could want to add something, then just go through the rezoning? Is that a clear question?
It is, but they had some alternate programs to go, they could apply for variance for three different lots, in which we felt the cleanest way to do this was to rezonate that parcel to make it R20 and make everything conform. So in the future, if they wanted to add on the bedroom or a wing to one of these houses, they would be able to make some lot size and setbacks.
But that was my question, you're doing this to bring them all into conformity?
Right.
So since this happened before the ordinance, and they want to bring them in, my question was, why not just grandfather them until they want to make the change and then rezonate?
The problem is that we don't, we used to allow three homes per piece of property, but you had to have a weight per, so they were not conforming as they are, they sit now. Currently, we only allow two homes on these property, one of those had to be one of the homes, so they don't need that compartment. So this was just the cleanest way to do that versus having to issue multiple variances on the place of lot size, you know, setbacks, everything else, it's just a cleaner way to do that. We felt like, if we give that property owner the option.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What relation does I and D have with this property? I notice they join each other.
It's a case of property owner that was interested and joined in, rezoned R20 for future growth, trying to utilize the ordinance.
What relation does Travis Alley have with El Springs Development Company?
None of them.
No relation?
Travis Alley's here to get part of it.
No relation? No relation?
Yes, sir.
So these two properties just came about at the same time?
Yeah, they came about. We've talked to Mr. Alley about possibly adding and doing some of his properties and he's wanting to be developed in the future, is what he wants to do.
Any more questions? All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carries. Now for a rezoning request for ZA 1608.
1608?
Oh, I'm sorry.
07, that's right.
07, I was getting one on the sorry.
1607, Mr. Frank T. Floyd requests rezoning from RA to R20 Single Family Residential, a 4.17 acre tract located on the northeast corner of 740 and Shady Rest Road, tax record This lot contains six homes, property plans, property owners plans to divide into six separate parcels. Presently, the large lot is not conform to the requirements of the RA zoning district by having six on the property. The homes were constructed on the lot prior to the adoption of the zoning laws and have changed to R20 and divided as a proposed, it should eliminate the nonconforming. Homes are currently serving as rental properties. Adjacent properties are zoned RA, with the exception of across 740 near the airport is zoned E1 like industrial. Our property is not located within a flood plain, but it is in a water supply watershed for payment. Traffic on 740 in this section has been stopped by the DMT of approximately 2,000 cars per day. Traffic law on Shady Rest was last studied in 2012, about 100 acres cars per day. Property does have public ward with no sewer service available. The planning department recommended this request and also the planning board unanimously recommended this request at our October 10 meeting. We'd like to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanday? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone here to speak for? Anyone here to speak for or against rezoning request of Z A sixteen oh seven? Not, I'll declare the public hearing closing. Most pleasure to the board.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Law, and a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. Now, we have a rezoning request for Z A sixteen oh eight. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sixteen oh eight, Travis Alley requests rezoning from R twenty, R A to R twenty, single family residential, request to rezon one tract, approximately nineteen point eight seven acres, tax record ten five seven nine. This tract is adjacent to the largest El Springs tract that we heard earlier. Recent transfer of property has been swapped between Mr. Alley and a prince of, not mentioned as church, but not known given G I S, but has been recorded. The order is still available on our, on Highway seventy-three, Mr. Alley, they elect to develop the property, and the R twenty, design, district design, with a lot of them lot size, about fifteen thousand square feet, and the R A district minimum lot size is thirty thousand square feet. The question areas in the birth area, neighbor properties are Zon mostly R A, with one lot on power and business for leak storage directly to the east. Approximately ten years ago, water and sewer were still due to this area, and served the air around Main Port School. It's not located in a regulated floodplain, or a water supply watershed, traffic on Highway seventy-three is about fifty-three hundred cars per day. Planning Department and the planning board recommended this request after October eighth, October tenth. We'd like to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sanders? At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for the rezoning request for Z A sixteen oh eight. Anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closing. Most pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Dennis. Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McTarg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. Commissioner Shudo, do you have a question?
Yeah. How to go with Mr. Honey, can I see that back with y'all, if you got anything to go through, your opinion? Just wanted to think, we're halfway through with sixty days, I'm pretty much. Just wanted to say the progress.
The, there are some things going on in the Mule Road mobile homes. Lot ten and lot three, according to Metronica, are ready for me to re-inspect. He does have permits on four of mobile homes that sit there. If he wants to spend that, that kind of money to bring them up to code.
Okay, so now he's been out there yet, he just pretty much just said.
We, we have not been back to re-inspect, he has called for re-inspection on lot three and lot ten.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Left here. Number four, Board of Committee appointments, presenter is Mr. Lucas. Good evening, Mr. Lucas.
Good evening. First item, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, is for the Gassed Community Action Group. This is the, the group that does weatherization and some other types of projects through USDA and other sources of funding, and it serves a multi-county area. They're, they're asking that Ms. Dolores Chambers be reappointed as the public representative to that board of directors, and you have that information in front of you. Do you have to answer any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lucas?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Dolores Chambers.
All right, I have a motion, Commissioner Shudo, I have a second, by Commissioner McTarg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. The next item is the Nursing Home Advisory Committee appointment, request for Mr. Lincoln Peeler to be appointed to serve a one-year term, beginning November seventh through November seventh, twenty seventeen. Again, you have that information in your packet from the Central Iowa Council of Government, seeking that appointment, and Mr. Peeler's application is also in your packet. Do you have to answer any questions?
Any questions? Most pleasure to the board.
I do have a question, our county manager. Is this position, if I could see that he'll believe?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and I believe it, it says it actually in the, the, one of the attachments, but yes, that's, that's correct.
Most pleasure to the board.
I have a motion, we approve, Mr. Sanders.
I have a motion, a second, Commissioner Louder, that's pretty much tied up. I'll give it to you, just, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. Anything else, sir?
I'm just done.
Thank you very much. Number five, the consent agenda.
I have a motion when you approve.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Shudo, a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, oppose, you carries. At this time, I entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting and go into the Greater Bay and Water and Sewer District.
I approve.
A motion, second. Commissioner Burleson. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. We are now in the Greater Bay and Water and Sewer District. You have two items, okay.
Go ahead, sir. Yes, sir, you have the two items, you actually have the, that resolution that had the incorrect date that needs to be reconciled and approved, and then also the records retention approval.
All right, any, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
I'll move that we approve the revised resolution that we received here tonight.
I have a motion to approve the revised, I have a second, by Commissioner McTarg. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. Next item, sir.
Yeah, the next item in the Greater Bay and Water and Sewer District is the records retention schedule that, that, for the board for consideration and approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Burleson.
I move that we approve the record retention and disposition schedule.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burleson, I have a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose. I would entertain a motion to come out of the Greater Bay and Water and Sewer District.
I approve.
Second, we've got the second, Commissioner McTarg, Commissioner Law, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, oppose, you carries. This time, I entertain a motion to go into the Piney Point Water District.
I approve.
I've got all kinds of motions over here, Commissioner Dennis, second, Commissioner Law, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, we are now in Piney Point Water District.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we ask your consideration and approval of the attached records and retention disposition schedule for the Piney Point Water and Sewer District.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Burleson.
I move that we approve the record retention disposition.
I have a motion, Commissioner Burleson, I have a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries. Entertain a motion that we get out of Piney Point Water District. I have a motion, Commissioner McTarg, a second. Second, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, we are out of Piney Point and in our regular meeting. There we go, sir. No one signed up or public commenting, anybody out there, anything they'd like to, like to say while we're here? Don't be bashful. Yeah. All right, at this time, I will start with board comments. Commissioner Shudo, who started on your side?
A couple things, just want to give a shout out to the West Stanley cross-country team. The girls came in, I believe, eighth in the state, and Lethler McManus came in like fourth or fifth in the state, she earned all state honors, and the Greystone Girls came in eighth in the state, I mean, I'm sorry, fifth in the state in one A. So we had good representation at this state championship this year, and the Bryson Childers came in fourteenth overall for the guys, he ran a five K in seventeen minutes and some change, which is pretty fast. What's amazing about him and his brother, they really don't practice cross-country, they play basketball all the time, and go out and run and gut it out for three miles, so hats off to those guys. And I just want to address something, since it was referred to me as a county commissioner. I actually got a pretty delapte of the day in the mail, I got this voter alert thing sent out by the North Carolina.
Mr. Chairman, we're getting into campaign here, I believe, and I would expect that you'd rule that out, or we need to conduct business on behalf of county.
Actually, actually, this is county business, because it refers to me, it's a county commissioner, and it has lies on it about actions that is set up. Take it, I'm just calling out the North Carolina Republican Party, and I feel I should have the opportunity to correct the lies on this. There are lies on this, and I'm not even running for office. So I don't even know why I was brought into this election. Anyway, let me correct the lies that are here, three of them. First of all, I laughed pretty much when I saw it, because it kind of looks like it was written by a third grader. First of all, it talks about my record, it says I oppose community schools, I do not oppose community schools, I support quality education. There is a difference. I wish we had the money to keep every single school open in Stanley County, but the facts are, we don't. And I supported a conservative plan to better utilize our tax dollars, not a liberal plan to keep every school open that we don't need open. Another one, this is actually comical, it says I oppose traditional marriage, really? What is a traditional marriage? A traditional marriage is a marriage between a man and a woman, and I definitely support marriage between a man and a woman. And finally, it says I oppose critical funding for law enforcement, I think I voted for against two funding requests for the sheriff's department, two funding requests, and one was for a raise for the sheriff, and the other one was for fifty thousand dollars worth of uniforms to be painted one shot. I don't see anything critical about that, and this was concerning my county, my work as a county commissioner. And I don't mind sending this stuff out, but at least be truthful about it to the North Carolina Republican Party. Hey, thank you very much, got that off my chest.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Dennis.
Good morning.
Commissioner Law.
Good morning.
Commissioner McTarg.
Just a couple things.
Yes, sir.
I received a card in the mail, I'd like to read, because it's for the commissioners, and not just me. It says, "Thank you so much for supporting the four H program, as well as allowing me the opportunity to attend this year's youth summit at the North Carolina Association County Commissioners Annual Conference. It was a wonderful experience. While I was there, we played a budget simulation game. Throughout the game, we had to make tough budget cuts, like I know you all have to do. This really opened my eyes on how you have to make difficult decisions, and eventually pick a cut, the less or of two equals. Thank you for everything you do for our county. Sincerely, Katie Van Horn, Stanley County Four H delegate to the Youth Summit." And also, I'd like to say, everybody go out and vote tomorrow, if you haven't already, and if you have, vote again.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate you for helping the Four H program. Thank you, Commissioner Burleson.
Good morning.
The only thing, I've got one more thing I'd like to say, maybe two, Friday's Veterans Day, I certainly appreciate all the veterans here and out there that have served our country. There's a couple things going on, the Town of Oakburg, we have a parade, I think it's at eleven o'clock on Fridays, so go out and support that, and then, correct me, Lea, if I'm wrong, but Wednesday, it'll be Thank You For Your Service Day. Last year was held at the Courthouse, and this year's going to be held at the Commons. If you're a veteran out there, bring your D D two fourteen, they'll register it to you, register it for you for free, and there'll be several veteran associations here that will talk to any veteran for any problem. Again, thank you so much for your service, and go vote if you haven't already. Under the record turnout, I heard today that forty, I think it's forty-six percent have voted early in our state, so that's, that's good, glad to see everybody excited about it. At this time, I entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss an economic development, and according to General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one A four, and a real estate transaction according to General Statute one four three, three one eight, one one A five. Chairman, let me go into closed session. Commissioner Burleson, second by Commissioner Dennis. Our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, November twenty-first. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, we're now in the regular session, closed session, thanks.